All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the January meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits. For consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight we'll do roll call and make sure we have enough members to constitute their quorum. So the first item on our agenda is roll call. Mario DeFolvio.
President.
Paul O'Brien.
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Joe DiAngelo. Yeah, but.
I'm here. Sorry.
There he is. Chris Judge.
I'm here.
Kelly Weiss.
Here.
Priest.
Here.
And I'm here. So that's seven, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. All right. The next item on our agenda is the approval of four months worth of minutes that were posted on Basecamp. Anybody see any errors or want to request any revisions in any of those meeting minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Hey, so when the in the September minutes, you got Joe DiAngelo both president and absent. I know he's capable of doing both those things, but I don't know if it should be reflected that way.
Judge.
We will make that correction.
You want to make a motion to approve the minutes with the exception of Joe's revision.
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion by Kelly. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, second by Paul. In favor, Mario.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes, I was not the second, but yes, I will vote to approve.
Joe.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
And Manny.
Yes.
Yes, so that's seven in favor, zero opposed for the meeting. All right. Next item on the agenda are secret determinations. All right, in this portion of our meeting, the planning commission.
Actually, Nick, can I pause you before you start reading? I'm not sure if I should be addressing this to Tito. There's somebody, Brenda, who's in chats trying to read messages. I'm not sure what kind of functionalities exist in Zoom for closed captioning if that's what she's requesting. Tito, I don't know if you want to try to reach out to the person to know what can or can't be done.
Okay, yeah, I'll talk to them in the chat.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Thank you, Chris. I didn't even see that. All right, so secret determinations. In this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. And after all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all applicants that will be speaking tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for our records before beginning your presentation. And as any member of your team who will be speaking, please also give their name and address for our public record. All right, so for tonight, our one and only secret determination is for the applicant, Robin Alpa. The project address is sixteen Riverside Drive. This is a site plan review and special use permit to allow a home bed and breakfast containing one guest room in a single unit dwelling in the C five neighborhood commercial district. Is there anyone on for the sixteen Riverside Drive project?
Uh, Nick, Robin Alpa, the applicant was unable to attend today's meeting. And so he apologizes for that. This is a secret determination, so you all can. If you choose, leave any comments or questions with staff. And we will forward that to the applicant so that he can answer prior to the public hearing next month.
All right, that sounds good.
And another thing to note on this is that the agenda states that there's one guest room. But there are actually four. It's a five bedroom house. Four are available as guest rooms for overnight lodging and one is a private bedroom.
Hey, I speak a quick question. Oh, go ahead, Chris. I'll follow you.
I just wanted, not even a question, but I guess a disclosure. I know Robin personally. I have no financial stake in this project, but I just want to get it out there that I know Robin socially and he's not just a name on a sheet of paper.
Likewise, I know and work with friends. But it does not bear any effect on my decision tonight.
Hi, Nick. This is Joe. I, one, one question on both of these. They say site plan reviews, but maybe I missed it, but I don't see any drawings for either project.
All right, yeah, I'm. It's a, let's see, it's listed as the sixteen Riverside Drive floor plan.
Do I look?
Okay. Tito, do you know, based on the plan that they submitted? Do they have enough room to provide, provide the three parking spaces?
They do, because for single family residences, which this technically would still remain. Tandem parking spaces are allowed, and so the driveway can be used to meet the parking requirement. In other words, you can stack spaces and still think they still know.
Yeah, Mark Goldstein, do you mind muting your microphone?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No problem. Perfect. Thank you. All right, I guess the second question, Tito, is in, in general. Hand drawn drawings like these, are you okay with this level of detail for a view?
Typically, it's not ideal. In this case, this is. This is a proposal that doesn't involve any modifications to the building or site. And it's more on the agenda for the approval of or denial of the land use. But we can, I, I think it's definitely reasonable to ask for updated drawings if, if the commission wants. Digitally drawn drawings.
Okay, I, I guess that was the, the question was whether they were planning to renovate inside, whether anything was changing enough that they would need an actual better plan. But if nothing's changing, I guess it doesn't really matter. We're looking at it.
No, no, this is the result of, of the zoning officer looking at and looking into Airbnb listings in residential areas. And so this is one of those that was contacted and they're going through the process to legalize the, the the bed and breakfast use.
Okay.
But that, it's already been in existence and there, there are no changes proposed.
Are they already using it as a bed and breakfast then?
Are they? They were, and then they were notified by the zoning officer and told to apply. And so that's, that's where they are now. But it has, it has been, it had been listed as available when the zoning officer contacted the applicant.
Okay. Anybody have any concerns or additional questions that they want Tito to forward to the applicant before her next meeting? All right, is anybody concerned about not having the applicant here to present or give additional information? Enough to not move this forward to a public hearing or propose it for a public hearing for the next meeting? Where I assume the applicant would show, be present?
I'm fine with moving it forward so long as they show up for the public hearing.
All right. That's great. Well, looks like everyone seems to be in agreement with that, so.
Actually, Nick, let me just ask one just general process question. I'm not sure if I've had this, we've had the experience well, as long as I've been on the, on the commission. What happens if an applicant or an applicant's rep, you know, their attorney, their engineer, whoever it is, property manager? What if nobody shows on behalf of the applicant at a public hearing? Do we just bump it? Do we hold a public hearing without them?
The, the, you would have to open the public hearing because it had been noticed to the public. But typically, the commission would table it. That would be appropriate to table until the applicant can appear.
Okay.
But and you would not close the public hearing. You would leave it open.
Okay, would you, would you table the hearing? Before those who showed up from the public to speak their concerns were on the record? That may be not a concern nowadays. We're doing things by Zoom because anybody could just call in. Or it's easier to call in or email in, you know, the next month. But if people, I think into the days where people physically came to the, the chambers. You know, it may be an inconvenience. Hey, I, I came out to speak by mind. I'm going to ask to come back in next month. How has that been handled in the past, Tito?
Yeah, so you open the public hearing and you have to allow those present to speak. And then, and then once there's no one left that wants to speak. Then the motion to table is made.
Okay.
I had one question too on procedure. This is Joe. Is, was this been looked at by code in the sense that there's sufficient restrooms and fire escapes for that application in the building?
It's going to between now and the next meeting. They'll, they'll be reviewing it.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Well, seeing no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion that the applicant's proposal involves reuse of an existing residential building, which is a type two action and therefore no further environmental, environmental review is required.
Seconded.
All right, seconded by Paul. All in favor? Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kelly? Miss Kelly's.
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
All right, and I'm also a yes. So that's seven in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at our February meeting for five twenty.
A second motion.
All right, seconded by Kelly. All in favor? Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
So yes, that's seven in favor, zero opposed. All right, so we'll see sixteen Riverside Drive in our next meeting for a public hearing. That concludes secret determinations. Now on to public hearings and final deliberations. This portion of our meeting will be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we're reviewing your information, so it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of your project to remind us what you're planning. And then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. To our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any members of the applicant's team that's planning to speak for our public record. And to anyone from the community that will be calling in tonight, we ask that you please start off by stating your name and address for our records. Tonight, since we're on Zoom. If you'd like to call in to comment about a project, the number to call is the planning department's phone number, which is six oh seven, 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 two, seven, zero, two, eight. Commenters will be allowed to speak in the order that calls are received. Unfortunately, calls can't be queued. And so if you receive a busy signal, please wait a minute and then retry the phone call. That number again is six oh seven, 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 two, seven, zero, two, eight. So our one and only public hearing and final deliberation tonight is for the applicant, Limestone Services, Inc. Project address is eighteen Carey Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit to convert a three unit dwelling into a four unit dwelling in the R three residential multi-unit dwelling district. Is there anyone on for the eighteen Carey Street project?
Yes, Mike. Mark Goldstein.
Ah, hello, Mark. All right, can you give us a little update or rundown on what you're planning to do?
It's a three family. You have on the first floor, I, I did present drawings on the existing first floor. We have two one bedroom apartments. On the second floor, we have a, a three bedroom apartment. It has a front and rear entrance, existing entrance. So what I was thinking of doing is taking instead of a three bedroom to have two one bedrooms, one to the front, one to the back. And I did show the existing drawings and the, the proposed drawings.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mark? I guess I, just a couple of general questions. Was there any particular reason you wanted to make the conversion? Just curious if you're having trouble renting one of them or something or?
The, no, no particular reason. The only thing I was thinking is usually a three bedroom is a larger, it's more occupants. And it could bother the people on the first floor and it's simply for the convenience.
All right. All right, and according to our staff report, you're required to provide two parking spaces. Do you have insight to provide two parking spaces?
Yeah, we have even more than two, but we have existing two car garage was. It, we never used it. So once we do it, we can have the, it's there already. We can put it in use.
Okay. Tito, can you weigh in on providing parking inside a garage?
Yeah, for lower density residential developments, it has been done. There is precedent for that.
All right, so planning department is okay if we move forward with the plan as shown with, it looks like it's showing room for four parking spaces as required.
Yep, that's correct. That's correct. As long as they're adequately paved in, in good condition, then, then they will meet the requirement.
Okay. Mark, the, the staff report had a couple of pictures of the condition of the house, the existing conditions of the house, what it looks like from the outside. It's looking a little, it's looking a little rundown. Any plans to spruce up the outside or fix up the outside?
So as far as paving, the paving is there already. As far as the outside, no changes to the outside, but I'm planning to fresh up the place. The outside to make it nicer and cleaner. We don't have any trash or anything. Adjust to give it a kind of a facelift like we start doing the gutters, we start, we start. I, I'm planning on painting the outside to give it a better, fresher look. So it's, it's as far as keeping the property clean, it's always clean.
Okay.
But while we were doing the work, we'll make sure everything looks like a nice property on the block.
Okay, are, are you a new owner? Have you owned this building for a while?
I owned this building for about a year and a half.
Oh, okay, all right. How, how's, just out of curiosity, how's the post on the second floor balcony? It, it looks like it's leaning a little bit.
I had their code just as them the idea of converting to, they told me they liked the idea, but it's something that I have to run it through. Through planning. That's when I contacted him about it. And he said, going from a three to a four, we need to have to go through this process. But as far as safety, there is no structure damage or anything. But once I believe we'll clean it up and paint the outside, it will, it will look representable.
Okay.
I can, I can understand what you're, you're saying, but it just, if you give me the chance, it's going to look nice and clean.
All right, that sounds good. All right, anybody else have any questions or concerns about what Mark wants to do?
My only question is, is this the, in the back, is that, that's, is that the only garage? Where's the four car garage?
So, so now it's a two car garage.
Okay.
And if you're looking closer to the, to the right side of the property, you can easily fit in one car. But if I remove the, the tree, which I can remove that tree if needed. Then you can fit in another car.
Okay, so it's, this is something that has to be done. It's not already something that's established on the property.
At the moment, you can easily fit in three cars.
Okay. Thank you.
Nick, this is Joe. I had the same question on the prior review. The code will, I, I believe this will be looked at for compliance with the right number of bathrooms, the size of the rooms and all that will be part of the planning department review perhaps? The drawing will be reviewed before. I guess that goes to you.
Yeah, not, not by us. The, the building department will be.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, the, the applicant has to get building permits for the proposed work, which I, I believe they've already applied for. Um, and so the building department will be working with them through that process. They'll have to issue a permit and inspect before and after the work is complete.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, is it likely that you're going to have tenants and, and they'll need four parking spaces? Or is four parking spaces more than you think is actually needed?
The way I looked at it before, not everybody has cars. And in general speaking, in Binghamton, there is a very big demand for one bedrooms. That's why I felt like this is something that the community will appreciate.
Okay. See, you're okay showing on the plan, removing that tree and showing a fourth parking space where the tree would be.
If needed.
Well, I guess that's my question. We have the the authority that we could reduce the required number of parking spaces. So you could go down to three parking spaces. And then you wouldn't have to get rid of the tree. But only if you really think that that's, you only need three parking spaces.
I don't think it's needed.
All right, so you think you're, you're okay if you were to just show three parking spaces and leave the tree in its place?
Correct.
Although I wouldn't want to be the person that parks under that tree, but.
Yeah, but like I said, if it's needed, then I'll remove the tree. But if there is no need, why should I just take off a tree? There's no need. I have, I haven't, I have another place that we had a full family house and we have four tenants living there and only two of them have cars.
Okay.
So, and especially, especially it's not far from the bus or anything. It's in a good place.
Okay. Is anybody else okay with reducing the required number of parking spaces or does everyone want to keep the four and, and see the site plan? Submitted with four parking spaces shown. Chris, yeah.
Um, given one of my concerns, since I've joined the public, which is, is to minimize the on-street parking issues that these types of projects create. So I would like to keep it at four required parking spots.
All right. Perfect. Anybody else want to weigh in on that? All right, it's just you and me, Chris. Every, how's everybody else feel? They, they want to keep it at four? But which is.
Okay, we're keeping it at four.
Keep it at four. Okay.
I, I am too. The only person who called in or wrote in was saying that there's trouble with parking on the street. So I agree with that as well.
All right. All right, that sounds good. All right, well, let's, uh, let's open the public hearing and see if there's anybody who wants to call in. All right, so this is the public hearing for the applicant, Limestone Services, Inc. The project address is eighteen Carey Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit to convert a three unit dwelling into a four unit dwelling in the R three residential multi-unit dwelling district. Uh, if there's anybody that would like to call in to comment the project, the number to call in is six, zero, seven, 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 two, seven, zero, two, eight. Tito, do we have anybody that's in the Zoom meeting for this project?
Uh, we have the person that is in the chat. I have given them the ability to speak. I let them know that. I'm not sure if they want to speak. They did write in the chat that there was a fire at this location. Uh, but other than that, they have not communicated.
Hey, Tito, I have someone on line that would like to speak. Give me one second. Ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes, hello. Yes, hello.
Ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, you're on the line with the commission.
Um, this is Cassandra Simmons. I was calling about the apartment building at eighteen Kerry Street.
Do you mind the, do you mind stating your address for record?
My address is twenty Kerry Street, Binghamton, New York, one three nine oh one.
Perfect, thank you.
I was calling because um, first I had wanted to know, um, it looks like whoever wants to purchase the building. Wants to turn it into a four-unit dwelling apartment, is that correct?
They have proposed four one-bedroom units, yes.
Okay, and so is this going to, this is going to be just for uh, regular, how do I put it? Like, this isn't going to be like a rehab rehabilitation facility, is it?
Well, unfortunately. What the rooms or what the units get used for, unfortunately, that's not really part of our review. Of the project, we're more aboard the looks at uh, you know, it uses uh, and public safety. The the applicant certainly hasn't um, included in his application any information that would lead anyone to believe that.
Okay, um, well, the reason I was asking is because I live next door um, to the building. And have been next door, you know, when the two fires hit and every time there's new tenants next door and so on. Um, one of my concerns was just um, you know, like I said, I have children. And um, I just didn't want any type of uh, issues with anything that's not safe for them. Because they play a lot um, next door, not next door to eighteen, but what it is is we have a strip of. Land right before you get to number eighteen property. And every time there's new um, anyone who takes over the building. Uh, there always seems to be a problem with reminding them that that is my area, that's my. Piece of property, and so we go into people having their dogs over there, using the bathroom or. Cars or garbage being thrown over there. Um, I haven't been able to get a sense at this time. Um, and then I was also concerned about the uh, the property as far as um. Uh, you know, like where stairs and where signs begin, because it looks pretty tricky as to how that goes. Um, if you go behind the garage, there's a stake there. Um, but then when you come all the way out, it does take up. Um, part of the property that the people at eighteen would claim. As opposed to it being mine. Um, so I had just wanted to, like I said, uh, make sure. Of uh, what the building was being used for, what it is worth to look forward to. As far as um, any rebuilding, um, you know, am I gonna have to be concerned about? Stuff being on my side or uh, top tires from nails or. Just stuff like that. So, that's what I had, uh, that's what I was calling about. As far as I'm turning it into a four. Unit, I don't see what the problem would be. I've been in the building. It looks like upstairs would be appropriate for it. I'm not sure where they're going to do it, but um, it does look like a nice apartment building. Just like I said, just concerned with any safety issues uh, because of my uh, grandchildren and um. Getting into any type of arguments as far as property is moved, that always seems to be an issue.
Alright, well, that makes sense. Um, we will ask the applicant after the public hearing is closed, we'll ask him to comment on. Some of your questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, Nick, just for the record, I can I can say that uh, what the applicant is applying for is a multi-unit dwelling. And dwelling units in residential zoning districts have to be occupied by a family or the functional equivalent of a family. I think what she was describing uh, in her question was what we would define as a social services unit. Um, and that's not what's being applied for here, and so um. In short, what she is asking about would not be permitted on this property. The units would have to be rented by family or the equivalent of a family.
Thank you. Alright, any uh. Anyone else on the phone?
No.
Okay, and do we ever get anything more from Brenda other than what was in the chat?
No, um, the only other thing we have is the um, the letter that was on Basecamp. From McHenry. Who was stating that. The street is a one-way with parking only allowed on one side of the street. Spaces are limited due to the number of driveways and homes with multiple vehicles. While adding one unit may not seem significant, it may cause issues with neighbors and parking spaces. And that was her message.
Okay. We'll see, nobody else on the phone and nobody else in the Zoom and nobody else in the chat. We'll close the public hearing for the project. Alright, um, Mark, do you just wanna comment real quick about? Your understanding of the property boundaries?
Yeah, um, I maybe she's speaking about the previous owner, but we're not planning on selling. We're not planning on doing anything than having nice regular people on premises. And um, she, the only thing I could remember, the property is now vacant. So, um, she, they they did ask the next door neighbor if they can use the driveway, which we let them use it as now. Why? We don't care, let them use it, so they can use it, it's no problem. But other than that, we never had, maybe they had from previous people, the previous owner.
Okay. Alright, that all sounds good. Alright, any other questions or comments about?
I mean, if it's possible to leave it, the parking spot's the way it is, I would prefer. But I do understand and I will comply whatever is needed. And if I can't get it to a four family, I will just leave it as a three family. Um, the only reason, because we have to do some renovations anyway. And it's vacant anyway, so that's why I came up with this idea. Putting it into a four family.
Well, I think what it's looking like, uh, everybody is leaning towards requiring the four parking spaces if you're gonna have four individual units. Uh, based on the plan that you submitted. It looks like you might have other options for ways to lay out the parking in order to get. Uh, four parking spaces on there. So I think possibly instead of trying to sneak the parking spaces in. By where that tree is, if you turn them ninety degrees, it appears that you have enough room to just park them. Um, so you don't have to maneuver past the building, just park in front of the building. That makes sense?
I'm sorry, you were saying to do it ninety degree?
Yes, if you rotate those parking spaces ninety degrees and pull them out so that they're not tucked behind the building, behind the that little. Shed addition that's on the garage. It it looks like you've got plenty of space that you could provide those two additional parking spaces that are outside of the garage. Um, in between the garage and the house. Are you okay if 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 you just submit a revised plan that shows that? I think you've got enough room to do that.
Yeah. Like me, might be a good idea.
Okay. Alright, so either way, we'll uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the uh, plan with the with the four required parking spaces.
Thank you.
Right, uh, any other concerns or questions?
Nick?
Yes, Chris.
Um, and this, maybe I gotta direct this question to Tito as to what can be done. Um, the the neighbor who was the caller a few minutes ago, referenced concerns with the boundary line. And um, some of the, I guess, previous tenants misusing some of her property. Um, I know in the past, sometimes we have required applicants to do things like privacy fences. Those have been included on the uh, the plans that we've approved. Um, wha- what are the rules for when we can ask applicants to include shrubbery, privacy fences, things like that? But in this case, might help a neighbor with these types of concerns.
So, whenever you have a project that requires a special use permit, which this one does. Um, special use permits are uses that are predetermined to potentially have an impact. And the code allows the planning commission to require um, any requirements within reason. That can mitigate those impacts, and so this is turning into a multi-unit dwelling, requires a special use permit. If the commission thinks that a privacy fence would mitigate a potential negative impact on the neighborhood, you can require that.
Let me make this thought. If if I were to motion to amend uh, Nick's possible motion. And suggest that we should also include a requirement for a privacy fence, does anybody else in the commission? Share my thought that might be a possible solution for the neighbors?
I think it's a good idea.
I would agree.
I think um, I I would.
I agree.
I would vote for it in favor of it, but I'm not sure. It it sounds like. To me, it sounded like it was just a misunderstanding between a a single previous owner. And the neighbor, I'd hate to make the new put in a fence when it was. Potentially, it's it's not that big of an issue. I'm not sure, I'm I'm conflicted, but I would vote uh, in favor of it if everybody else. Was inclined to require offense.
So, we would, in that case, just whenever you make a motion to approve, if the board is going to approve. Then make it uh, just a condition that there be a fence, I don't know if it's a fence or a privacy fence specifically. On the um, eastern property line.
We should ask uh, Mark. How does that make you feel if the the commission is inclined to ask for a fence to divide? Between your property and twenty Kerry Street?
Um, I don't have an issue with putting over there a fence, but I I personally think she. She, it's uh, it's like your feeling was, like she might have something from the past, from the previous owner, like a misunderstanding. And um, and that's why she today, she she's a nice lady. I saw it a couple of times alone, goodbye. Small talk, nothing major, but we never, we never had an issue, just the opposite. She wants to use the space or anything, we always let her use the driveway, so. Um, and as far as going into her property or the grandkids are playing, no one is in, no one bothers her. And like I said, that the property at the moment was vacant, so we don't even. Whatever she said was from previous tenants living there or something.
Okay. What do you, what do you think, Chris?
I don't know, I uh. I thought it might be a possible uh. Solution, but maybe it's overkill.
Was a flash on the bottom of the screen of a chat, maybe from someone named Mike.
Um, I do see someone communicating in chat, the the public hearing however, has been closed. Technically, the 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 commission could reopen the public hearing if he wanted to, but it's up to you.
Um, I, if if this, if the person who's in chat is willing to call in and share their opinion, I will make a motion to reopen the public hearing. To let somebody else share their thoughts.
Is there a second to reopen the public hearing?
A second.
Alright, second by man, uh, all in favor? Uh, Mario?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Paul?
Sure.
Joe?
Yes.
Chris? Kelly?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Alright, so we're gonna reopen the public hearing and. Chance, Ed. Kromowski is willing to call in. Uh, the phone number to call in. Is. Six oh seven 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 two seven zero two eight.
Nick, I'd also like to note that I uh, gave Mr. Kromowski the ability to speak, so if he unmutes himself, he can speak via Zoom as well. That is coming from his computer, but. There's an issue with the sound.
I'm sorry, Ed, we we can't seem to understand you. Ed, is there any?
Hi, Nick, I have Ed on the line, I'll put him on.
That's better.
Uh, Ed, you're on, so go ahead.
Okay, I live down the street at twenty six Kerry Street, and I heard about this needing right being Kerry Street. I believe that's the house that was damaged by fire, it's been vacant. And I'm all for whoever wants to, you know, if they wanna make it a three or four unit, that's fine. You know, I'd encourage them, whoever's willing to come in here and redo that and run it out at three. You know, and I I wanna put any restrictions on them. I I know this area doesn't really have, well, it does have privacy fences. But usually it's for people, so they can let their dogs roam. But uh, it's kind of a private area anyway, because with the interstate coming through. Over there by Sturgis Street, it's kinda quiet anyway. I'm all for the, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, well, thanks again for taking the time. I didn't expect that, Tim and I was hoping to make it early and just. Give a thumbs up to whoever wants to uh, invest and make that property viable again. I think uh, you know, three, four units, what's the difference? That uh, I I don't have any uh, any drawback for them doing anything with that.
Alright, excellent. Well, we appreciate you calling in and letting us know how you feel.
Okay, thank you very much. You guys have a good evening, you guys and girls have a good evening. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright. I think since we've heard from Ed, uh, everyone okay if we close the public hearing back up?
So moved.
Alright, we'll close the public hearing. Alright. Fence or no fence?
Magnive.
Alright.
No fence, no.
Okay. Okay. Alright, that sounds good. I uh I appreciate the looking into it, though. I I like that we were talking about it tonight. Alright, uh well, based on all of that, then I'm gonna make a motion. So the first motion is that the proposal involves the reuse of an existing residential building, which is a type-two action on your seeker and that no further environmental review is required. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Alright, second by Chris, all in favor, Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And man?
Yes.
Alright, I'm also a yes, so that's seven in favor, zero votes. And. Make a motion that the requirements for the site plan review and special use permit have been met. Uh conditional on that the final site plan that gets submitted to the planning board. Does include four parking spaces.
Second that.
Alright, seconded by Joe. All in favor, Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And man?
Yes.
Alright, I'm also a yes, so that's seven in favor, zero opposed. Alright, Mark, good luck with your uh with your project.
Thank you very much.
Alright, and you can call Tito if you have any questions or uh concerns about what was decided tonight.
Thank you.
Alright, very good. Thank you. Alright. That concludes public hearings and final deliberations. Uh anybody have any other business?
Nick, who do you have tonight? Alabama or Georgia?
Well, who even cares?
Okay, I you know, I know you're a big college football guy, so I thought I'd ask.
Yeah. Georgia, everybody want to weigh in? Anybody else?
I I'm tired of Alabama, so I'm rooting for Georgia. I'm tired of Alabama.
Yeah. Yeah, seems to be the. Good plan. Obed, what did what do you?
I I I'm I want Georgia to win as well, but I just don't think it's possible. Seeing the the trend of how that's gone over the past years, I just, yeah, no shot. But I mean, I want them to win.
Ten-dollar bet?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Alright, I'll take Alabama. You take Georgia, how's that?
I thought you were taking Georgia.
Alright.
I'm out, I'm out.
And any uh anyone else have any uh any planning commission business? Any chance we're in person next month?
Uh we don't know either way yet. Uh we'll probably know in the next week or so.
If you want to put a ten-dollar bet on that.
I had just one quick question. This is Joe, and it was on the stadium area. Were did that go from our meeting, did that go to council?
Yeah, that was adopted uh December twenty-second. That was adopted, and so. We're just closing that out now with the state, and then we can use. That plan to go after grant funding to implement some of those projects, so. Um it should be good for that area.
Tito, my my um email after the meeting was a question I forgot to ask was. Was there like a ballpark estimate or, you know, conceptual estimate is a fifty million, a hundred million?
And so each each um proposed project or improvement will have a cost associated with it, and that should be. At the end of the plan, I believe they included that at the end of the plan. Um in sort of an action plan section.
So they they have to come up with it, yeah?
Yes, they did. They did come up with fit with numbers for all of the proposed projects.
Okay.
Alright, well, thank you, everyone. We have a. To adjourn?
I'll I'll move for all second where we we stand.
Alright, Chris's motion to adjourn, seconded by Paul, all in favor? To say hi, hi?
Hi.
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 Well, uh we'll see everyone in February. Thank you.
Go Bills.